Welcome to everyone. Uh, welcome to everybody who's watching livestream and who'll be watching this later on on the town's website. I'd like to call the meeting, committee of the whole meeting for Monday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order at six oh two. Thanks everybody for being here. Um, I'm councillor Garnet. I'll be chairing the meeting and with me in the chambers is Mayor Cliff McNeil Smith. Joining via Zoom are councillors O'Keefe, Fallett, Rintul, Duncan and Wainwright. Also with us in the chambers tonight are the CAO, Mr. Randy Humble, Director of Corporate Service, Mr. Andrew Hissick, Corporate Officer, Ms. Sandy Nelson, Manager of Information Services, Mr. Will Maxwell, and Senior Accountant, Ms. Kathy Chen. And joining via Zoom for staff will be Mr. Troy Restall, Manager of Finance, and Mr. Corey Newcombe, Director of, uh, Manager of Long-Term Planning, Long-Range Planning, pardon me. And before we begin, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that we're hosting this meeting on the traditional territory of the Wasanich Nation. And I'll look for an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any errors or omissions?
Mister, Mister Chair, if I may, Mister Chair, were you planning on having Mister Newcombe introduce the, uh, the first item?
I was, and he's not presently here yet. So I, I'll switch it up and go to item B if that's okay?
Yep.
That's great. And then hopefully by that time he'll be here. Okay. Call the question? No, we have a, we haven't had a mover yet. You barber a second? Okay. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? We have none opposed. Motion carries. And move to approval of the minutes from the regular committee of the whole meeting from November second, two thousand and twenty, and I'll look to councillor Rintul to move the recommendation.
Move approval.
All will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. And under Administration of Finance, we'll move to item six B, which is arts funding. And I'll ask if Andrew Hissick would like to introduce it.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The purpose of the report is to provide information on a proposal from Artsy for a Peninsula Arts and Culture Grant Program and on the implications of potentially rejoining the CRD Arts Service. The, the town was a participant in the CRD Arts Service for several years until withdrawal at the end of two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, there's been a gap in available grant programs dedicated to local arts and culture. Early last year, council directed staff to have discussions with Artsy about potentially allocating some funding to them to administer on behalf of local groups, and they put in a proposal, uh, which came before council, uh, in November of last year. So the, um, proposal from Artsy will be included in the upcoming budget for consideration as a supplemental item. But the other question to be addressed here is, um, whether or not council has any interest in rejoining the CRD Arts Service as, um, either a group two participant or just through a voluntary contribution. If there is any interest in a voluntary contribution outside the CRD Arts Service, then council can make a resolution to that effect, and it will be brought forward again through the two thousand and twenty-one budget process. If instead, or in addition to, there is an interest in rejoining the Arts Service, um, that would take some time, but we would have to inform the CRD, and then they'd begin the process of, uh, taking that through the membership for, uh, potential inclusion in two thousand and twenty-two at the earliest. Are there any other questions from council?
Thank you, Mister Hissick. Uh, any questions from members of the committee? Councillor Rintul?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, through to Mister Hissick with respect to, um, the voluntary contribution, um, to the CRD Arts Service. I recollect, uh, posing the question previously, and I believe councillor Fallett, uh, had the answer that, that other communities, uh, other municipalities, uh, do, uh, indeed, follow this sort of process and make a voluntary contribution, uh, and go without that voice, uh, at the governance level on the CRD Arts Service. If I recall correctly, uh, it was, uh, North Sanich was the example that was provided, so I'll look to staff to confirm that. And if they could please advise the amount of the North Sanich contribution, if, if staff are aware of that, and also if they're aware of any other municipalities and the amounts of their, uh, voluntary contributions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, councillor. I'm not exactly sure how many there are that make a voluntary contribution. I believe North Sanich's level is fifteen thousand, although it's, um, it's just my, my recollection at this point. Uh, you're right, though, it would not get us a seat at the table, nor would local organizations be eligible for funding. Uh, what it would in fact, uh, fund is the regional services that are provided generally through the core.
Well, thank you. And if I may, Mister Chair, just a, a comment from my colleagues', uh, thoughts. At this point, I, I think I'm comfortable with, with, uh, the first and second, second recommendation in the report, and, and I had, um, been thinking of an amount of, uh, ten thousand dollars potentially for the CRD Arts Service. And I suggest that because I understand we don't have a, a governance, uh, uh, role, uh, if we were to go that route. Having said that, um, I, I do feel our local community, uh, benefits, uh, to an extent from, um, the arts and cultural opportunities that we see in, in the greater, uh, CRD. And as a result of that, um, I feel that a, a hybrid that is, uh, being proposed here uh, by Artsy is, is one that may make sense in our circumstance. So I'll yield my comments there and, and look forward to, uh, thoughts from other members of committee.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just to, um, further clarify a little, the, um, the volunteer contribution. Um, North Sanich has, uh, contributed, uh, been a volunteer contributor to the CRD Arts Service, uh, since two thousand and fifteen, and the amount in, uh, last year, uh, was fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, I can't speak to it in previous years, but I, I know it was fifteen thousand dollars in that year, and to the best of my knowledge, there's been no other, uh, communities as volunteer, uh, contributors.
Uh, councillor Wainwright?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, I wanted to just, um, just speak about the background of, uh, why the previous council chose to withdraw. And, uh, at, at the time, um, CRD Arts, uh, came to Sydney Council, and they were, um, proposing a significant increase in the, in the, uh, annual levy, uh, to, uh, the Arts Service. And, um, Sydney would have to consent to that. And the rationale, uh, that they were presenting at the time was that they needed more money to be able to implement, um, I, I'd say, uh, a more substantive program, and they were going through a strategic planning process to figure out what that was gonna be. So what the previous council was kind of faced with was, um, the amount of money is going to go up, and it was going to go up significantly. We were being asked to consent to it, and services at CRD, when you're in, you're basically locked in, and it's very difficult to get out. So, and, and we didn't know what we were gonna get for that additional money, and they couldn't tell us because they were going to go through a str- strategic planning process to figure that out. So it was kind of like buying a, a, a pig in a poach. So we, and, and they were telling us that, uh, no problem. If, if you decide you want out, nobody's gonna hold you to it. But they weren't willing to actually put that in the, the service bylaw that we could withdraw, you know, at, at, uh, on, on providing notice. So, um, it, it was simply that uncertainty of not knowing what we were gonna get, the increased budget, and the potential of being locked in, plus that they were giving us a verbal, there'll be no problem if you wanna withdraw, but they would not put that in writing. That was kind of the background that, that led the previous council to make that decision to pull out. And then, of course, we had to give notice, and we withdrew the year later. So it, it's actually now several years since they initially approached us, and they've finished their strategic plan, and it's also clear what they would use the money for now. So a lot of, of what was, uh, led the previous council to decide to withdraw, uh, the circumstances have changed. So, uh, from my own perspective, um, I can see, uh, some value in some of the regional things that are done, and I can see why Sydney might, uh, contribute to some of that infrastructure in the core. But I can also see a gap in the funding for our local arts and culture. And, um, we don't get as much out, like, our, our local, uh, organizations do not get as much out of the grants, uh, as, as we're contributing. So we are in fact making a contribution that, that goes to the region and does not come back to the peninsula. And the proposal that, um, uh, councillor Rintul, uh, made of putting in some money for the region, and, uh, the hybrid where we would increase the support locally, is a way of kind of doing both, with the downside, of course, being that we don't have, uh, a role in the governance. Um, you know, I'm, um, I'm, I guess I'm happy to support this hybrid approach. I'm also open to, um, the idea of rejoining the Arts Service, but I would want, wanna look at that carefully. So anyway, that, that's kind of the, the background and a bit of, of my thinking at the same time.
Councillor Fallett?
Oh, thank you very much. Um, and certainly what councillor Wainwright just, uh, spoke to is, is right on the money. He's quite correct in, uh, the review of what happened. One of the other aspects that was also being missed is that the Sanich Peninsula has incredible arts and cultural community, which is, um, is growing. It's, it's growing quite significantly. And, um, a lot of the groups that are here on the peninsula and in the Sydney region would not be able to access the grant money through the CRD, even if we were sitting on the board table, simply because they aren't listed as a nonprofit, they aren't registered, that's our society. And there had been some talk, um, informal conversation about how do we, how do we encompass the community groups, and, um, there wasn't a model that came out that would look at the community groups. And I see this hybrid model that, um, Artsy has proposed as being a viable, um, model that, um, is quite doable. The other part to this that, um, we can also keep in the back of our minds, if we are to decide moving forward that we're going to accept a hybrid model, there is absolutely nothing stopping this council in the remaining, uh, just under two years, or a future council from looking over this again and saying, you know what, I think we should join the CRD. There's nothing, it's, it's not a one-way or no-way. The only thing is, if we do join the CRD, and there are really good arguments for it, we don't have the option of coming out. And I think what, what I like about the hybrid model is it's an opportunity for our community arts group to provide a grants program for programming. We've been really good here in Sydney on supporting our arts and culture infrastructure. We've got great buildings like the Mary Winspear Centre. We've got the museum, we've got, um, Artsy itself, and of course Shaw Ocean Discovery. We don't really put money into programs, and that is, I think that's a big part that's missing. If you just build a shell and don't provide a way for the people who are inhabiting that shell to put on the programs, then we're missing the boat on it. And a lot of the groups that would be able to come to Artsy asking for grants to put on programs within our community would simply not be able to go to the CRD. So what we would be looking at, if we really felt that that was an important part of arts programming that should be supported, not only would we be, look, if we were to re- rejoin the CRD Arts at, at a full-fledged, um, member at, at level two with the forty-two thousand, that's current rate, we'd also be putting dollars into arts programming here in the peninsula. And that's not a problem. It's just something we need to be aware of. But I think as a first step, it's a viable one to look at doing the hybrid and seeing, is this working? Is this meeting our objective as a community, as a, as a council, what we want from, for our community and from our community? So, um, I would be happy to make a motion on those first two points, but I really would like to hear from the rest of council before I consider that. Thank you.
Uh, first-time speaker, uh, councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, first, a couple of questions, um, for Mister Hissick, and then I'll make some comments. Would my assumption be correct that if we were to go along with the Artsy plan, that there would be an MOU, uh, drafted to just specify, um, how the program would work?
That's certainly a possibility. Right now, we're working off their written proposal, and, uh, that would form the basis of any agreement that would, uh, be appended to what we currently have with them.
Okay. And, um, yeah, I think I would, I would, yeah, favor seeing something like that. Also, I'm wondering, um, you know, they've come up with, with an amount, which is fine. Um, I'm wondering whether there would also be an opportunity for them to come to us each year prior to budget time to say, here's the applications, here's the amounts that we've received, um, so that we have, council have the opportunity to provide, um, more than that, um, than that amount that stated. Like, do we see that amount as being a line item for the next several years? Or would that item that they submitted today be, uh, uh, you know, the amount for the next few years?
Councillor, my expectation is that this is their request for a number of years, and how many years is dependent on what council's comfortable with, or perhaps what's written in the MOU. It seems a little, um, counterproductive to bring the decision process annually to council because what they're offering to do is administer a program for us for a set period.
Right, yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks. Uh, thank you for that. Um, so my comments or feeling about this, I'm, I'm in favor of the program that Artsy has put forward. I think, um, they've outlined it very well, and, um, what I'm not so sure about is, um, making a contribution to the CRD Arts on a voluntary basis. And my thinking on that is that I, I understand the, you know, the arguments and some of the rationale behind supporting regional arts, but I think regional arts is evolving, and in past years, there was, you know, the art center for this region was in Victoria with, uh, some major theaters and art facilities there. But it's evolved a lot with the Mary Winspear Centre, uh, playing a big role in the local arts community and the performances and things that take place. So I look at that. I also look at what Langford is doing with their fifty-seven million dollar, uh, Performing Arts and Culture Centre. And so I see that arts and culture is evolving in our region, and it's no longer centralized. And so I see that there's an opportunity here for us in Sydney to be that hub, um, as part of a more decentralized, uh, arts and culture community. So I, I would actually favor, um, not making a voluntary con- contribution and, um, having more money available out here on the peninsula. It's hard for me to justify, um, you know, I, I don't see how sending money down the highway into Victoria is going to support our local community. Um, there's a huge, huge economic development benefit that comes from the arts and culture community, um, and supporting our local artists. Uh, so that's where I would, I'd, I'd be fine to go with the Artsy program, and, um, if it meant that we had to, you know, give them, we had a little bit more available each year to, to supplement special programs, I'd be happy to consider that, but, um, not so keen on doing the voluntary, uh, contribution myself. Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, and I appreciate the, the comments, and I guess we've, um, we've strayed a little into deliberations on, on some of the particular without a motion on the floor. And, um, and rather than, than speak my views on the, uh, on the particular options before us, I, I would like to put a motion on the floor. Uh, and I'm, I'm actually wanting to put rejoining the CRD Arts Service motion on the floor. Uh, I'm in favor of it, but I would like to motivate to it, uh, but appreciate that if it did not pass, uh, that we still have the option to consider, uh, hybrid or, or otherwise. Uh, so I'm not, uh, I'm not trying to, I'm not making this motion to try and exclude, uh, the discussion of, of a hybrid model, uh, or otherwise, but I think, uh, given our community was a part of, uh, a part of the CRD Arts Service for, uh, for eight years, and, um, and, uh, I think we had an excellent presentation, I would like to motivate to that. So I, I will move that staff be directed to bring forward to the two thousand and twenty-one budget process, joining the CRD Arts Service.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you, if I can, yeah, just to continue. Thank you. So we've had, um, we've had excellent presentations, uh, from both the, the CRD, uh, Arts Service, um, the, the elected representative and Chair, uh, councillor Jeremy Loveday, and, uh, the manager of CRD Arts Service, uh, Mister James Lamb, and they provided excellent information back in the September presentation. Um, I was on, serving on council in the two-eight, two-eleven term when, uh, that council choi- chose to join the CRD Arts Service, uh, first joined the CRD Arts Service. As we heard from, uh, the representatives during the September presentation, the, the CRD Arts Service started in either two thousand or two thousand and one, so is, is close to twenty years old. And, um, I, uh, since that time, uh, I've been, uh, what I'll term a regionalist in terms of arts. I don't think, uh, while we know that there are arts groups, performing arts groups based in Sydney or based in another municipality, uh, the reality is, is that arts groups perform, uh, throughout the region. Uh, Sydney groups don't just perform in Sydney, and, uh, groups as far away as Suk, uh, in Victoria and elsewhere don't just, uh, sometimes come and perform in Sydney. And so there is really, uh, the term used in, in some of the reports we've, we've had is a regional arts ecosystem, and it really is a regional arts, uh, uh, community and ecosystem. And I think, um, uh, the main case to be made for joining the CRD Arts Service is that it's a well-established service. I certainly appreciate, uh, the, uh, councillor Wainwright bringing forward the, the deliberations that the previous council had in the rationale for the decision they, they made at the time. Um, but we did have an excellent presentation and appreciate the strategy that the CRD Arts Service has today, and changes they have made, is they now have five different, uh, granting streams, uh, for arts organizations throughout the region. Uh, I think, uh, which is an improvement, uh, to the, uh, to the more limited funding opportunities that they provided, uh, earlier. It's, uh, it's a sizable, well, uh, I'll, uh, I'll recall that, uh, in the presentation, I think CRD Arts Service, uh, grants something in, in, uh, the level of two point, two and a half million dollars a year, uh, and that there are the two levels. There's the, um, the, the group one, which participates at, uh, a hundred percent, and our group one participation level would be calculated at, at a hundred and thirty thousand, if I recall correctly from, uh, from the information provided by Mister Hissick, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, and that, uh, they do have a, a group two level participation, uh, appreciating that, uh, some of the smaller municipalities in more outlying regions may not have as concentrated, uh, arts, and, um, thirty percent would represent, uh, a contribution of forty-two thousand dollars. And I think what needs to, I think what, uh, the council, uh, that, uh, that first determined to join the CRD Arts Service, recognized, and I think it was, it's been appreciated over the years, is that if you, whatever amount you contribute, uh, and let's use the forty-two thousand dollar figure at a thirty percent level, is, it's not an expectation to get forty-two thousand dollars back to, uh, Sydney-based arts organization. It's a recognition that you are supporting the regional arts ecosystem, and you're supporting, uh, uh, organizations elsewhere in the region and their sustainability, and being able to perform wherever they'll perform in the region. And, uh, I think that's, uh, I think that's vitally important. There are currently nine of the sixteen CRD jurisdictions, thirteen municipalities and three electoral areas. Nine are currently participating in the CRD Arts Service. One of them is Salt Spring, which joined last year. Another is Suk, which joined last year or the year before, and another one is Machosen. Um, in some cases, more outlying municipalities than ourselves, um, but, uh, fully appreciating that there is a regional arts ecosystem and, and benefits to, uh, to participating. I also want to, to highlight that, and I think it's understood by, uh, by my, by, uh, council and, and by, um, and by the public, is that in contributing to the CRD's Art Service, you are not paying into facility, arts facilities. You are paying into programming. And, um, and that's an important distinction to make, and I appreciate councillor Fallett raising that uh, our community currently, uh, contributes a substantial portion to community art, uh, um, arts and culture infrastructure, whether it be the Mary Winspear Centre, or the museum, or, or, or otherwise. And I think we are underfun, Sydney is underfunding, under-contributing to the regional arts, uh, ecosystem. I mean, we didn't contribute anything, uh, in the last, uh, in the last, uh, two years, in nineteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, uh, or in two thousand and twenty. And so I think it's, uh, it's a very important, uh, it's a very important decision. Uh, there is a timeline. We wouldn't be rejoining until two thousand and twenty-two. One of the aspects of it that's been, uh, pointed out again this evening, we've been reminded this evening, is that only nonprofit organized, arts organizations can apply to the CRD Arts Service. And, uh, what, what we also know is through our contributions to the Sanich Peninsula Arts, uh, council, is that they have done some granting, and they have done granting to Sydney-based organizations that are nonprofits. And so I'm willing to do a hybrid approach in terms of making an additional contribution to, um, the local arts, arts, uh, organization, uh, for them to be able to grant to, uh, to nonprofits. But, um, you'll recall in the information that we were provided in, in September, that there are dozens and dozens of arts organizations that receive granting, uh, through the CRD Arts Service. And, um, I, I will, um, I will, uh, thank the Chair, uh, for those, for allowing me to make those comments.
Any other discussion? I'll, I'll just weigh in really quickly. Um, I prefer the hybrid approach. I think that, uh, Artsy's done a goo- uh, done a good job here presenting with this option for us. Although I, and part of it is, I do think we do need to contribute. So the voluntary contribution, uh, as opposed to councillor O'Keefe, I think it's important that we do contribute something. Having not given the last two years, I think it's important that we show that we're, we're supportive of the regional ecosystem as far as the cul- culture and arts in, in, in the Greater Victoria area. Um, I like the fact that, um, their presentation or, or proposal in here is gonna encompass some people that may not normally apply or can't apply and not able to get, uh, grant funding. Um, that's just something that, for me, that, um, I think is really important to, for our local artists, and, um, I'll leave it at that, and I see councillor Wainwright wants to make a comment.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So, um, the thing, we're talking about two au- options here, basically. Everybody seems to be generally supportive of the hybrid, and the question is whether you do hybrid and no contribution to CRD Arts, hybrid and voluntary contribution, or- voluntary contribution, or hybrid and join the service as a group two. So the, the Artsy proposal is 16,800. So if it was support that and no contribution, that's the low end, 16,800. If we do the Artsy and a voluntary contribution of 10, we're looking at 26,800. And if we join the service and support Artsys, we're looking at roughly 58,800, so close to 60,000. So there's a huge budget range that we're talking about, and we don't have the context of knowing what the budget is like. So I'm a little uncomfortable picking the high end of the range as the only option we're going to bring forward at budget time. Like, I would be okay having this overall discussion at budget time. You know, we've got the three options on the table, basically. I would be comfortable if council wants to make a decision tonight about supporting the Artsy Grant Program. And if, if we do, that's actually probably a, a practical thing to do because it gets the word out early, and people can start putting together their grant applications and that kind of thing. And then the decision about whether we make a voluntary contribution or join is something we could deal with at budget. I, I just don't, I guess I'm a bit uncomfortable trying to make the big budget decision now and without context to the rest of the budget. If I have to, I would be conservative, and I would vote against the big budget option. Thank you.
Counsel Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, my understanding is with respect to the, the hybrid recommendation, one and two would be that we're bringing forward that second option to the budget process itself, the, the voluntary contribution. So the amount would be determined as part of that budget process. So I, I, I think the, the recommendations are addressed, and I, I know I'm not particularly speaking to the motion, so I'll, I'll leave my comments there. In other words, I'm not as concerned with seeing, you know, this move forward this evening. Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counsel Wainwright, for, for those comments. And I guess in making the motion that I made is that it is not making the decision on joining the CRD Arts Service. It is bringing it to the budget deliberations so that we can appreciate joining the CRD Arts Service in, in, in view of seeing the entire budget. Which then, I guess, does beg the question, are we not in effect just moving all of this to, to budget deliberations when we see the entire budget? I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Would you like to comment, Mr. Stick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For clarity around what I would find useful going into budget is if council's comfortable with recommendation number one to refer the Artsy proposal to budget. Also, if council's comfortable with recommendation two, I just need an amount to include, and 10,000 has been mentioned. Beyond that, any investigation of rejoining CRD Arts would not in fact be a 2021 budget item. So while, while that work could happen concurrently, it's not going to have an impact on the 21 budget. It's really items one and two that will.
I believe there's a motion, oh, Counsel Wainwright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a motion on the floor. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we could essentially expedite things by moving all three things forward to the budget process and just giving Mr. Hissick the amount? If, and if that's our intent, I think we could deal with this pretty quickly.
Chair, I'll move to withdraw my motion.
Second, you're fine with that?
Second, yeah, agreed.
Counsel O'Keefe?
Thank you. I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of moving numbers, number three to rejoin CRD Arts. I, I just don't think it's worth pursuing at this time. It seems like most of us seem to favor recommendation number one for sure. So I would have liked to, to vote on that, to move that ahead and have a separate motion for number two. And I don't see, you know, I guess it concerns me, we're having all of this discussion and talking about what, what we want to do, and at the end of it all, we're really not making a decision. We're just shoving things forward again. So I guess I wouldn't be in favor unless there seems to be, we want to make a separate motion, that number three, to discuss it at budget time. I, I'm not in favor of doing that. Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you. Without a motion on the floor, I would move that we move all three recommendations to the budget. And subsequent to this motion, I would like to do a second motion with regards to the amount in option two.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Counsel Fallett?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate moving it all over to budget conversation. I really think that that's just deferring, as Counsel O'Keefe was just speaking to it, that's just deferring the conversation that we've already had. I would like to see one and two move, and I don't see, I haven't heard this evening that number three is going to be strongly supported. So I really don't see why we're doing, why we want to move all three forward. Thank you.
Counsel Duncan?
Thank you. I, I concur with Counsel O'Keefe and Counsel Fallett. I, I haven't heard a lot of support. I've heard some ambivalence and, and one counselor, the mayor, supporting rejoining the CRD Arts Service. I'm not sure what we will see in the budget that would change, change our minds on that, that we would suddenly think, to, to me, it's not just the amount, it's also being locked in for, for several years. And so I don't know what we're going to be surprised with in the next couple of years that, that we haven't already seen in previous five-year budgets. So we know, we, we know, I think, that probably being more conservative is, is what we're, where we're going right now, or at least that's where, where I feel. So where we are going, it sounded like we were mostly happy with the voluntary, definitely, you know, motion one. I don't know why we would defer that to the budget, why we can't make that right now because I, I didn't hear anybody speak against that one. So I, I would be in favor with, with actually having a vote on, on each of these individually instead of deferring them. Yep.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Just a brief comment in that the, the reason I withdrew the motion was based on, on Counsel Wainwright and, and coming forward and, and expressing that we're unlikely to make a decision on, a final decision on the option until we see it in the context of the entire budget. I now appreciate that some colleagues are saying that they are comfortable doing that. So it's, it's, it's whether we're making decisions. I mean, we had a presentation from SIP, and we decided to move it to budget deliberations. We didn't, we know what the amount is going to be, but we didn't make a decision because we wanted to see it in the context of, of, of the entire budget. And so I, I remain in favor of this motion.
Any other comments? Counsel Wainwright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a question for clarification. My understanding is that if we're not actually a participant in the CRD Arts Service, then any of the organizations that are, that have grants through the CRD Arts Service are not allowed to perform at Sydney venues. Is that correct?
Counsel, I, I have never heard it phrased in that manner. I'm not sure why they wouldn't be allowed. They just wouldn't be, if there's an organization that gets funding through CRD Arts and they chose to perform here, I don't believe the CRD would come down on them. But I, I don't know that for a fact.
I think it's, the rationale was that they aren't, they shouldn't be subsidized to play out, to perform in jurisdictions that aren't supporting them. And so I was kind of hoping that Counsel Fallett might know off the top of her head. I may be wrong on this one. If that were the case, that is, basically, the, the difference between the voluntary and the member would be the governance and whether those organizations could perform in Sydney. And it would be things like, you know, ballet, orchestra, theater companies. And I'm not recalling any of those organizations performing locally after, after we withdrew. But if we don't make the decision tonight, there is time to look into that. On the other hand, we might say that it's not worth 32,000 to have those organizations performing locally.
Mr. Hissick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The one example that does come to mind is the Victoria Film Festival, which up until last year did do performances, plays, I mean, movies at the local theater until they had to close. And I anticipate they would continue once the local theater reopened. That's just one random example.
Any other comments? Counsel Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and just as a, a point of order, I, I assume that any of us would still have the privilege to ask that the recommendations be voted on separately despite the matter in which the motion is currently on the floor. Is that correct? Perhaps through to the corporate officer?
Hi, no, the motion on the floor basically needs to be dealt with, called the question and a vote taken, and that motion is that items one, two, and three be moved to the 2021 budget process. If you'd like to split that apart, then you can do that as an amendment if you like, and then do them separately or withdraw, do them separately.
Or we could, or if this is defeated, we have the option to go back and vote on them separately.
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of order, if, if I might, and through the corporate officer, is, is I believe that if it is simply by request of a council, a council member, a committee, the whole member, to request splitting of a vote, that it is split. It doesn't have to be voted on, or, or it's not an amendment. I appreciate that we made a previous motion, or there was discussion of previous motion, but if there are multiple recommendations in it, that it can, it can simply be split by, by request from a councilor without debate or, or amendment?
I'm not aware of that, but yeah, if you wish to do that.
I mean, we've, I've done it previously as, as Chair of Council meetings, but...
My understanding is that the Chair has the discretion to decide that a motion can be dealt with in Sariata in parts. I don't think it's a point of order, though. I, I think it's something that Roberts Rules lets the Chair do.
Counsel Fallett?
Thank you. Just as a reminder, so that council or committee understands that even if we were to say no to rejoining the CRD Arts Program, this go-around, that does not stop the town of Sydney from readdressing this a few years down the road. If it's decided that this is not beneficial to the community, that we are somehow being penalized or suffering from it, or that we feel that we really should be part of the regional arts, there's absolutely nothing stopping council from taking a look at rejoining. The challenge is that if we were to rejoin and decide at some point in the future that that's not what we want to do or how we want to stay, getting out is, it is possible, but it's next to impossible. It's a very laborious and probably, I mean, it's like any CRD service. The idea is they want to have a budget, they want to be able to supply that budget across the board and know what they're doing. So having municipalities pull out is really not what they want to do. That's not their, their model, that's not how they want to operate. So I think we do need to give it really careful consideration. But even if we decide this year not to join the CRD, regardless of whether we do a voluntary amount or not, that does not stop any council in the future of reversing that and going back into the CRD. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Ms. Nelson?
Hi, I was just going through my notes, and under incidental motions, there's quite a few of them there, and I looked at the one that's called consideration by paragraph. It's to discuss a long motion part by part before voting on the whole. So if you would like to move that, it needs to be seconded, and it will pass by majority vote, and then you proceed after that.
Ms. Nelson? You said we could consider it paragraph by paragraph for the debate, but we would still wind up voting on the entire motion, not separately.
Correct.
So that isn't something we want to do.
I leave it with what, how the mover would like to move, or the Chair?
Counsel O'Keefe?
Thank you. It just seems easiest to me, deal with this motion that's on the floor. If it's defeated, then from what I understand from Ms. Nelson, if we choose to, we can then, someone can move recommendation one, and we can have that second and voted it on, and then we can move on to recommendation two. So that seems to me the, the easiest and best way to proceed. Thank you.
Given that my Latin is not that great, and Peter Wainwright's is, I will, I will move the motion that's on the floor currently. So all those in favor? And those opposed? Motion's defeated? Now, if someone would like to move another recommendation?
I'll move that council refer consideration of Artsy's Peninsula Arts and Culture Grant Program proposal to the 2021 budget process.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Speaking to that, that initiative, I just have a couple of questions, and perhaps through to staff or for our next meeting, for the budget meeting when we're considering it. And that is that in the materials provided in our package by Artsy, it indicates that they current, currently have an Artsy member grant program, and the entire program is attached for a reference. And it indicates that they have a December 30 cut, a December 31 cutoff for applications which would have occurred this past December, and that they proceed with making the decision on grants in February. So they already have a process for granting. This is what's also before us tonight as, as a new program or a revised program. But my question through the staff is, is given that they already have that in place, they likely have applications, is if we were to support this recommendation in terms of a new level of funding, would that take effect this year or in 2022? And I think we perhaps need to hear from the arts organization on their intent.
Mr. Mayor, my expectation is that they will adjust their timelines according to our approval process. But I don't know that for certain, and I can certainly clarify by next week.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if they need to adjust their timelines so much as they need to adjust the amount that's eligible to grant. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if they need to adjust their timelines so much as they need to adjust the amount that's eligible to grant, uh, assuming this process is complete by budget deadline. If not, I think there's still time to, um, to make that clarification. Um, in context of our own budget proceedings. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion this before us. Thank you.
Mayor McNeill Smith?
Thank you. Uh, this is a, I'm going to express a concern that is not, uh, that is not a decision factor for me in terms of whether it is supported or not. But in the proposed adjudication committee, it, it says two Artsy board members and a member of council from each participating municipality. And, and I'm opposed to that. Uh, but again, that is, that is something that could be worked out, uh, further down the road. Uh, the other thing that I would request, uh, to, uh, through to staff to, uh, to bring, to, uh, request from the Artsy organisation at our budget meeting is, given that they have had this, uh, member grant programme in place, uh, for a number of years, I would like to know historically, uh, that is at least for the last two or three years, uh, what grants they have provided, uh, to, uh, Sydney-based organisations. And of course, this would have been out of the existing grant funding that, uh, that, uh, our council uh, has been providing to them over the last, um, uh, over the years in our term. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Uh, thank you. Just a question, a question, uh, to Mr. Hysick again. Um, the, uh, councillor McNeil or, uh, Member McNeil Smith made me think about it in regards to the, um, the, no, an MOU for the, for the programme. Would they come, would we be requ- requesting that at budget time? Or do you anticipate that would be done sometime after? Um, would it be useful for you to have in advance, um, either through email or, or do you need it, uh, as a motion? Um, some of the elements that we would like to see in such a MOU? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I consider the MOU to be an, an administrative follow-up and I think the important thing here is whether you approve their, um, funding request and the rest will follow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carries? No opposed?
I'll move the second recommendation that council direct staff to bring forward to the twenty-twenty-one budget process, a voluntary contribution of ten thousand dollars per year to the CRD art service and Indi- oh, sorry.
Second.
Mayor McNeill Smith?
Thank you. A question first through to staff. What, uh, what would be our current, for, for twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, uh, an acceptable, uh, number for the, our, uh, popu- the population of Sydney? The CRD is using at the moment, I believe, a, a figure of twelve thousand seven hundred.
Mr. Mayor, there are, um, two or three different numbers commonly used. One is from B.C. stats, um, and that's probably where they're getting that number. I always estimate it around twelve thousand dollars, I mean, twelve thousand people.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion to change the amount from, uh, ten thousand to, uh, to twenty-four thousand. And, um, I'll, I'll speak to it, uh, if it's, uh, seconded.
Do I have a second, or?
A second for discussion.
Let me, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I think again, given the, uh, significance of the arts, arts ecosystem, regional arts ecosystem in, in the Capital Regional District for a population of, uh, some four hundred thousand and, and our population, that, uh, two dollars, uh, per resident, uh, is, uh, is a reasonable contribution, um, for, for our community. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none? On the amendment? Those in favour? Opposed? Sorry, councillor Duncan, were you for? Opposed?
Could you call the question again, uh, Mr. Chair?
So are all those in favour of the amend- of the amendment? Opposed? Motion's defeated?
So now the question on the original ten thousand?
Yep. All those in favour?
Can we have discussion first on that?
Oh.
Councillor O'Keeffe, did you wish to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so I, I appreciate the comments that have been made about, uh, supporting re- regional arts in terms of a, uh, voluntary contribution. However, I guess my feeling again is we are contributing to the regional arts ecosystem by what we're building here in Sydney. And when I hear, um, I see your hand, Mr. Wainwright, I'll just finish my comment if that's okay. But I, I, I would rather see that money go towards programming in our, uh, our own community. So that's why I'm, I'm not in favour. Thanks.
Councillor Wainwright?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, during the budget meeting, anybody can propose amendment to change that voluntary contribution to any amount they would like. All we're doing tonight is giving Mr. Hysick a number that he can put into the draft. This is not cast in stone. It can easily be changed. And there is really no reason to have a lengthy debate on the number that we start with at budget time since it, it can easily be changed.
Any other comments? Councillor O'Keeffe?
So, sorry, at risk of making the debate lengthy. However, I guess my point is that no matter what the amount is, whether it's zero or ten thousand or twenty thousand, my point was that I'm not in favour of it all and hence my opposition to the motion. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favour? Opposed? We have one opposed. Councillor O'Keeffe, motion carries? Would someone like to move the third recommendation? Okay. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Circle back to six A. Budget for OCP review, joint First Nations engagement. And I'll look for councillor, Mr. Newcombe to introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and first off, my apologies for being late for the meeting. My computer was being disagreeable tonight for some reason. Um, so my report on the agenda is to detail an opportunity for the town to undertake, uh, joint engagement with our municipal partners in Central Sanich and North Sanich, uh, to engage with, uh, the Peninsula First Nations communities through the Wasanish Leadership Council. And, uh, this, uh, this opportunity evolved out of, uh, multiple early discussions between myself and my colleagues in North Sanich and Central Sanich, um, just about, uh, how we were going to approach, uh, engagement with First Nations communities. Um, it became evident, uh, fairly early on that all three municipalities, um, undertaking our own separate engagement processes, uh, would be difficult primarily on the Wasanish Leadership Council and other First Nations communities just because of the level of administrative burden it would place on them, having to respond to multiple municipalities essentially asking for the same thing. Uh, so the, the discussions gradually evolved into, um, undertaking this joint process. Essentially, all three municipalities are looking for similar feedback on our processes. They, they may differ in the details. Um, but out of the first few meetings we had with the Wasanish Leadership Council, it became fairly clear that, uh, what they would like to transmit to us as municipalities is fairly common across the three municipalities. So there's some efficiencies there, uh, definitely. Uh, Modus, uh, who is our consultant for the OCP review project, as well as Central Sanich and North Saniches, uh, has been, uh, very helpful as a facilitator in this process. Uh, and there's certainly been a benefit to having them at the table. Uh, a number of their staff are quite experienced in First Nations engagement and that's been very helpful, uh, to date in the process. Uh, and so going forward, the idea is to, um, attend a number more meetings with the Wasanish Leadership Council's Technical Advisory Committee and that, and a meeting as well with the Leadership Council itself, uh, and discuss and evolve, uh, what type of content that, uh, the First Nations would like to see, uh, considered in, in light of our three OCP processes. Um, issues such as, uh, land claims or more weightier issues like that that really belong with, uh, senior levels of government, uh, would not be discussed throughout this process. Uh, we'd be more focusing on high-level policy, uh, acknowledgement of First Nations culture and its history in, in this land, uh, and First Nations stewardship of, of the land and, um, uh, I think higher-level policy, uh, that's more appropriate to the municipal level. Uh, so staff have certainly seen some, uh, early positive benefits of our, of our few meetings with the Wasanish Leadership Council to date. And we think this is, uh, a very beneficial process to continue on with. It wasn't planned for in the original, uh, OCP budget, uh, hence why we're coming forward with a supplemental amount, uh, amount now. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Do any committee members have any questions for Mr. Newcombe? Councillor Rintul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thanks, Mr. Newcombe. Um, you'll recollect, I, I wasn't, uh, keen in terms of seeing, uh, the OCP budget, uh, increased on the last go-around, uh, to accommodate, uh, consultation from basically what Modus had prepared as sort of a menu of consultation options outside of their original proposal, which of course would have included, uh, consultative process with the community. Uh, you know, I see this as a, as another, um, add-on, um, you know, like extending a warranty on a new car, for example. Um, I see value in the process and the communication. Um, all three municipalities contributing, so I, I'm assuming the total budget here, uh, to the process, uh, to Modus is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We're being asked for seven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, I'm not completely comfortable with it. I'll look forward to hearing my colleagues' comments. Uh, it seems, Mr. Newcombe, you, you stated you've had some meetings, uh, at this level with the Leadership Council and you feel it's incumbent on the process then to have an additional three meetings with the same working group. Is that correct?
Uh, so, so there would be, there would be three additional meetings with the Technical Advisory Committee and then a final meeting with the Wasanish Leadership Council itself. So four meetings in total.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Keeffe?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I, I like the idea of, uh, getting some more input of, from our First Nations on our OCP. Um, I'm, I'm concerned about the amount, twenty-two thousand five hundred. Seems like a lot of money for, for four meetings and, and, and some documents. And I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense. I know Mr. Newcombe mentioned high-level policy and that sort of thing. I'm wondering if you could give an example or two of the, the types of things that you would see coming out of this that would, um, add value to our OCP. You know, based on the discussions that you've had and that you, you think you'll have in the future, um, what, wha- what would be the, the more tangible, uh, sort of value from, from, from those?
I, I, I would say that the primary value would be in moving forward the reconciliation discussion. Uh, in the two meetings that we've had, that's been very clear, um, from the Wasanish Leadership Council's Technical Advisory Committee, that that is, uh, foremost in their minds. And, um, I think a big part of that would be an acknowledgement, uh, in the OCP with some language around the history of First Nations in this area. Um, they've gone through a similar process with the District of Sanich in the last year or two, I believe, uh, with one of their local area plans. And there was quite a lot of back and forth, I understand, uh, to get the language there just right, um, both, on both sides. Um, in addition to that, I think there's a number of discussions we've had around, uh, the use of parks and how the use, the municipality's uses, use of its parks could reflect, uh, the history of First Nations, whether through signage or the types of plantings that take place. Um, so things of that nature that are, I would say, uh, not impactful in terms of, uh, land or, or funds changing hands, but, um, move the reconciliation discussion forward and then an acknowledgement of the history of First Nations, uh, in the communities.
Uh, thank you.
Councillor Wainwright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I don't have any difficulty supporting this. Uh, the things that are influencing me, one is that, um, I, I like to, uh, I like the collaboration with the other municipalities on any kind of, uh, planning initiative, but particularly on something like the OCP. Uh, you know, I, I think it is, um, it's good to encourage our staff to be working together. And, uh, I, I wouldn't want to, uh, not provide the funding to support that. The other thing is that, uh, I'm also quite supportive of, uh, improving the, um, the collaboration with, uh, with the Wasanich, um, through the Leadership Council or otherwise. Um, and I, I think that is best achieved, uh, at a staff level. And again, you know, this is very much going in, in that direction. So, um, regardless of whether we get valuable input, uh, to the OCP out of it, I can see those things as beneficial. But I'm also hearing from our staff that they do think we're going to get useful stuff out. So if, if that's ticking like three of the boxes for seventy-five hundred dollars, that's doing pretty well and I, I don't have any difficulty supporting it. Uh, and I'd be happy to make the motion at, as, uh, whenever you're ready for, for a motion.
Mayor McNeill Smith? Councillor Wainwright?
Oh, I'll, uh, move then that seventy-five hundred be allocated in the twenty-twenty-one budget to engage Modus Planning Design and Engagement Inc. for First Nations engagement during the official community plan review project.
Have a second, or?
Second.
Discussion. Mayor McNeill Smith?
Thank you, and I, I echo, uh, the comments from, from Councillor Wainwright, but also wanted to say that, um, if we had known at the time we were approving the original OCP budget that, um, all three municipalities would be, uh, engaging in an OCP, that they would have the same consultant and that there was the opportunity to do this collaborative engagement, uh, that, uh, the consultant would have, I think, presented it at the time and I think we would have, uh, uh, we would have easily made the decision to proceed. So I, I think this is a raw opportunity that arose, uh, further down the road once we were in the OCP process and, and I think the collaboration is, uh, is well worth the, uh, the investment. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the, all in favour? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries? Final item on the agenda, review of water utility rate structure. We have a report dated January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one and a presentation by Mr. Andrew Hysick, Director of Corporate Services. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, if council is prepared to move the staff recommendations, uh, I can spare you a forty-five minute presentation. It's really your call. Seeing no motion coming forward, I think.
I'm happy to move it, but I think it's really valuable for the I'm happy to move it, but I think it's really valuable for the public to hear your presentation.
Thank you very much for your confidence in us.
So shall I make the motion, then he can present and we can vote on it at the end?
Your call.
I want to let him present.
All right. So, I'm not the only one presenting to you here tonight. It's going to be a three-party presentation. You all know Mr. Troy Ristel, our manager of finance from regular reports to counsel and the odd presentation. But you might not be as familiar with Ms. Kathy Chen, who's also going to be presenting. She's a key member of the finance team who's kind of our unsung hero and you'll get to see her in action tonight. They've both been invaluable members of this review committee and we're all very pleased with where we ended up and hopefully you will be too. So counsel's aware that this review's been ongoing for some time now. And in the meantime, we've been keeping our rates relatively stable while the process has been ongoing, despite the fact that the bulk water rates have been increasing over the years. We're now finally at a point where we feel comfortable making a firm recommendation to counsel on a new rate structure. As indicated in the staff report, an increase is unavoidable. The question is, how best to apply that increase? Our goal here tonight is as follows: confirm for you why an increase is needed, convince you that our revenues should be better aligned with our expenses, and to convince you that our recommended approach is the best way to achieve financial sustainability. The agenda quickly is, why are we doing the review? What our current situation and challenges are? What the solution is? What our proposed changes are going to be to the structure and rates? And how will those proposed changes impact customers? And at the conclusion, we'll open it up to questions of counsel. So why we're doing this review is to ensure the financial sustainability so we continue to operate a water utility that delivers safe and reliable drinking water and provide fire protection. We want to make sure we're collecting enough revenue to do that and we want to make sure that the revenues are more sustainable than they are under the current structure. So acknowledging that this is not strictly a finance department initiative, we've been working all along with Engineering and Works and we thank Jen Clary, Bruce Damar, Brian Robinson and Mike Kimber, our Underground Utilities Foreman, for their valuable contributions throughout the process. They've really helped us to understand where the cost drivers are in our water utility and also to supplement the data we've been working with all along. We've been able to fill many data gaps we had and will continue to enhance that data going forward. So in addition to internal staff, we've looked at what others are doing, both regionally and elsewhere, other similar size and makeup organizations. For a while, we used a local consulting firm who's a leader in utility rate setting in North America. They have a product called Waterworth, which is software that we tried using for a while but ended up deciding that we had enough tools internally that we didn't need that. But going through that consulting process with them certainly helped get us to where we are today. Finally, we did a careful look at the AWWA Rate Setting Manual. It's the American Waterworks Association, who essentially provide a great deal of resources to utility operators throughout North America. Our proposed rate design considered the inputs from all of those organizations as well as additional learning that we did along the way. With that introduction, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ristel.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Can everyone hear me just fine? Can everyone hear me?
Yep. Yeah, we can.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me present here tonight. I would like to start off by going over reviewing some of the key terms that will be used throughout tonight's presentation. First one is variable operating expenses. Now, within the town's water utility, this includes only the purchase of bulk water from the CRD at rates that are set by the Sanage Peninsula Water Commission. Non-revenue water, this is water use that is not measured or metered, thus not charged directly to a utility account. For example, hydrant flushing, firefighting and any other water system losses such as small leaks. Now, a small markup is added to the consumption charge to account for this water use. Our infrastructure levy through a parcel tax on the annual tax notice, these are funds collected and transferred to reserves for the replacement and renewal of the town's water infrastructure. Fixed operating expenses, these incorporate all other costs to operate the water utility. They do not vary with consumption and include administrative, operating and maintenance costs. So what is the current challenge in the water utility? That challenge, or more importantly, that question is, are we collecting enough revenue? And one way to measure revenue sufficiency is the surplus balance, specifically as a percentage of revenues. Now, the surplus balance is used in the water utility to stabilize temporary revenue fluctuations. Now, this graph illustrates that we have maintained a relatively high level of surplus since the mid 2000s. This has allowed us to keep balancing the utility each year through the use of surplus. However, the graph also illustrates that the surplus balance has been dropping over the last five years. And this is what has prompted staff to commence the water rate structure review. So the water surplus has been decreasing in recent years, as I said, as it has routinely been used to balance revenue requirements from the rising costs of operating the utility. These increasing costs have not been passed on to users. And the principal reason for the increase in costs is represented in the column chart at the bottom of this slide. Now, the CRD bulk water rates have increased over 32% in the last decade and that is represented by the orange, sorry, it is represented in the blue versus the Town of Sydney rates, which have remained largely unchanged, other than a small increase in 2019, and this is represented in the orange. So you can see the narrowing of the two, between what we're charging and what we're being charged. So current policy dictates that the surplus balance is to be between a range of 10% to 15% of utility revenues. Currently, that's about approximately $200,000 to $300,000. The policy range is shown on this chart between the blue lines. The surplus balance has been well above this 15% upper range of policy until recently. And if no changes are made, the most recently adopted financial plan will have the surplus balance falling below policy range. And this is shown by the red line. And in fact, the surplus balance will fall below zero in 2023 if nothing's done. This will place the utility in an unsustainable position, so the answer is, we are not collecting enough revenues. Okay, so the next question is, are the revenues being collected in relation to our costs? But before that is answered, let's quickly review the utility's cost components. Now, the water utility is made up of fixed and variable operating costs. The variable component is made up entirely of the CRD bulk water purchases and this is all consumption-based and accounts for approximately 55% of total costs. Now, the fixed component is made up of all the other operating costs, including the infrastructure levy, and it doesn't change much from year to year. And it's obviously not dependent on volume consumption. So this graph here illustrates that a higher proportion of the revenue which is being collected currently is variable and is not in relation to the variable costs of the utility. This revenue is collected through consumption charges as compared to the fixed revenue which is being collected through a minimum charge and the infrastructure levy. So this mismatch here between the two leads to large shifts in years where actual consumption differs from budget and causes surplus and deficits to happen. And the end result is this makes revenues less stable. So just to recap quickly, what I was just saying is, we do not have revenue sufficiency. Revenues being collected are not enough given increasing costs to the operating utility and will continue to decrease the surplus balance to levels below policy and beyond. As well, the current rate structure does not have revenues and expenses matching the fixed and variable components. This has caused swings in annual revenue when consumption varies from budget and has led to revenue instability. So the obvious question is, what is the solution? So to address our declining surplus balance, we need to collect more revenue to avoid the scenario of this graph, which we looked at a few back. Collecting more revenue will bend the curve and keep the surplus balance within the policy limits. Now, the green line represents the proposed solution, which we will be discussing in the coming slides. So knowing that we need to generate more revenue, the easiest way to do this would be by increasing the current variable charge based on consumption. However, if this was done, and as represented by the lower graph in this bar, we would have a widening gap of the variable revenues that are collected to our current variable expenses. So this solution simply increases the misalignment between the revenue and cost structures and exacerbates the issue of revenue instability. So obviously, the needed solution is to increase the fixed revenue component of the rate structure to bring our fixed revenue in line with fixed costs. And the vertical red line shown in this graph shows the equalling of the revenue and expense components that we're proposing. This change will bring us more revenue stability as revenue collection would not fluctuate in years where consumption varies from budget. And in any given year, this would also mean that all fixed expenses would be collected regardless of levels of consumption. And as well, the variable expenses would also be collected as they are the bulk water purchases recovered through the consumption charge. Okay, so if we were to increase our fixed revenue component as being proposed, how would we allocate this to each of our customers? And to do this, we started by looking at several different approaches and evaluated them in light of these following objectives. We want to minimize the magnitude of the change. We don't want to create a large shift in our current billing methodology. Neither residential or commercial customer should be unequally impacted. The approach chosen should be fair and equitable, and that is that each customer pays for their fair share of costs. And the, and finally, the chosen approach needs to be reasonably easy to understand, explain and administer. So our research indicates that there is no rate design that is without some shortcomings and trade-offs have to be made under any approach in light of this. Simplicity is also a worthy consideration. Okay, so the three different approaches that staff evaluated for allocating a fixed revenue increase are by meter size, by account and by unit. And these are all commonly used approaches and can all be argued as cost drivers for allocating the fixed revenue increase. Now, if we look at meter size, what this means is the larger the meter, the larger the customer's share of fixed cost. But this is more commonly used in complex water delivery systems that produce, treat and store water. With accounts, this is where each account, water utility account, is charged an equal portion of fixed costs. And then with units, this is where each unit is charged an equal portion of the fixed costs. And just to make note that an account may have multiple units. Now, as well, the base scenario, which is the current structure that we're using, and we mentioned the simplest way would just be an increase to the consumption charge, is an approach that we quickly discarded, but we're including it for comparison purposes during this presentation. So it was determined that meter size was not an appropriate driver of fixed costs in the town's water system. Having a larger meter size is captured on the variable side, usually with more consumption. And allocation by account was also discarded as it does not take into consideration those accounts that have more than one unit. For example, a strata building with one account may have several units in it. So the recommended approach for allocating the increase to fixed revenue is by units, so that each single-family dwelling or each unit in a multifamily home, apartment, strata or commercial building is charged an equal share of the town's fixed costs to run the water utility. Now, taking that one step further, another element of the proposed rate structure is a discounting of units, where one account serves a large number of units. Now, this includes large apartment buildings, single-metered stratas and certain types of commercial buildings. And the purpose of scaling is to recognize the economies of scale associated with serving accounts with a high number of units. Hotels and care homes are scaled as well, but more to recognize the fact that these units typically have less demand on the town's water system and are occupied on a part-time basis. So just to quickly run you through an example and how this works. So a strata with 90 units would have its first 50 units fall under Group 1 and they would not be scaled. The remaining 40 units would fall under Group 2 and be scaled at a .75 factor. And the end result would be that 90 units are scaled to 80 units and the fixed revenue charge would then apply just to the equivalent of the 80 units. And if we were looking at a 90-unit hotel, all of the units would fall under Group 4 and be scaled at .5. And as mentioned earlier, this recognizes the lesser demand that these types of units have on the water system and their correlation to the fixed costs. Now, I would like to say that staff have spent considerable effort on developing this scaling table and feel that it appropriately reflects the economies realized by the various multi-unit buildings. Although it would be possible to create a more complex system that breaks down multi-unit buildings into even smaller groups, it is important that the scaling method be easy for customers to understand and reasonable for staff to administer. So that's the end of my part of the presentation and I'm going to pass it over to Kathy to continue.
Great, thank you very much, Troy.
Great, thank you very much, Troy. You can all hear me okay, I hope? Excellent. So thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. Before we continue, I thought we'd do a quick progress check with our agenda, just to see how we're doing. So we've already talked about the reason for needing to do this review. We've talked about our current challenge, being one of revenue sufficiency, two, revenue stability. We've discussed the solution, being the need to increase our revenues, but also to increase our revenues from a fixed source. Next, we're gonna... Oh, next is over here? Oh, no, sorry. Still trying to work out the clicker here. Okay, so next, we're going to talk about what is our proposed change. We're going to talk about how the proposed change impacts our customers. And then finally, we're happy to take any questions that you might have. So what is the proposed change? Well, as you likely know, we're proposing a new rate design that consists of a new rate structure as well as new rates. So what does that look like? So our new proposed rate structure has three components. First is an infrastructure levy that's charged per parcel. Second is a fixed charge per unit. And finally, a variable charge based on consumption. So the infrastructure levy would be collected on the tax notice. The fixed charge and the variable charge would be collected on the quarterly utility bill. So our proposed infrastructure levy is $75 per year. That compares to our current parcel tax of $65 per year. Our proposed fixed charge per unit is $20 per quarter, and that will not include any amount of consumption. Now, the closest comparable component under our current rate structure is our quarterly minimum charge, which is charged based on account at $20 a quarter, but that also includes approximately 3,000 gallons of consumption. Our proposed variable charge is $5.37 per thousand gallons, and that's a decrease of $1.13 compared to our current rate of $6.50. Now, for comparison purposes, we're also showing here what the rate would be under the base scenario. And just as a reminder, the base scenario is where we're not changing the rate structure. So we would maintain that $20 minimum charge per quarter for each account. But in order to generate enough revenue, we're increasing the variable rate. So under that scenario, we'd have to increase the variable rate to $7.50. Okay? So now, how will these changes impact our customers? So a few slides ago, we talked about these objectives that we wanted our new rate structure to achieve. So we'll evaluate customer impact in the context of these objectives. And we'll start with the first one there, which is minimizing the magnitude of the change or the increase to our customers. So the first measure of impact that we looked at was the average change. So as you can see here, under our proposed rate design, there will be an increase on average of $26.79 per year per customer. Now, it's important to recognize that this increase is not the result of a change in rate structure, but rather simply due to the fact that we need to generate more revenue in total in order to achieve sufficient revenues. Now, if we look at a couple of the alternative approaches that we talked about earlier, the base scenario. So the base scenario is where we're not changing the rate structure at all, but simply raising rates to generate enough revenues. As you can see, under the base scenario, the average change is in fact higher. So having a component that also changes the rate structure helps to moderate the impact on average to our customers. As you'll see, under the account approach, which is that bottom bar there, the average impact is much higher. Okay? So under our proposed unit-based approach, the annual change per customer of $26.79 works out to be about 50 cents per week. So looking at averages and compared to the alternatives, the proposed approach has the smallest impact. So next, we wanted to look at, well, what is the impact to all of our customers, not just on average? So to do that, we're going to use a frequency distribution chart. So that's what that chart looks like for our proposed scenario. So this chart shows the change in annual water charge for all of our customers. So on the horizontal axis, it measures the change. So you'll see where the horizontal axis has a zero, that means no change. Anything to the right of zero is an increase. To the left of zero is a decrease. The vertical axis measures the number of customers who experience a given level of increase or decrease. So as an example, if we look at that dot up there, that dot is telling us there's 230 customers that have an annual increase of about $20. Okay? So looking at this graph, you'll clearly see most of our customers will be paying more. But of course, again, that's because we simply need to raise more revenues. Another important point to note on here is this one right here. That's the point furthest to the right, representing the maximum amount of increase any one customer can expect under the proposed new structure. Okay? So now, let's have a look at what this graph looks like under the proposed scenario, or sorry, under the base scenario. So that's the scenario where, again, no change to rate structure, simply raising the variable charge. So note on this graph where, on the horizontal axis where the zero is, it's quite far to the left. As you can see, every dot is to the right of zero, meaning every customer will be paying more if we use the base scenario. Now, that dot I spoke to earlier on the top graph here, that 7680, that's about right there on the bottom graph. So you can see many more customers under the base scenario will be paying more than 7680. 7680 was the max under our proposed approach. It's not the max in the base approach. Many customers will be paying more, and in fact, some will be paying significantly more with the max being around $1,100 per year per customer. Now, doing these graphs reminded finance staff of something we've seen before. This picture looked familiar. And it was this. Does anyone know what this is? That's right, Hallie's Comet. Now, I know Andrew is also hoping this is a downward trajectory of our annual deficits. Hopefully. Okay, so back to customer impact. We're going to have a closer look at utility accounts that just have one unit. And this is relevant because approximately 90% of our utility accounts do just have one unit. So that's your single-family residential condo units that are individually metered and some businesses. So this is what applies to most of our utility accounts. So I'm going to show a fairly large table here, but we'll build it out together over the next few slides here. So the first couple of columns show quarterly consumption at various levels and then what the user would pay under our current rate structure for that level of consumption. As you can see, up to about 3,000 gallons of consumption, the user pays $20. So that's a reflection of our current minimum charge. Beyond that, the more you consume, the more you pay. Now, we'll have a look at the base scenario, which again, this is where we're not changing the rate structure, but we're increasing the variable charge. And as you can see, under the base scenario, the more a user consumes, the more the user has to pay. The fourth column shows the change between the base rates and the current rates. So unless you're at a very low level of consumption, that's captured in the minimum charge, as the consumption increases, the increase in cost also goes up. So what does this look like for our proposed rates? So that's what these next two columns show. So the proposed column shows what the user would pay under our proposed rates. And then the next column over shows the change between the base rate cost and the current cost. For reference, we're also including this column here, this last column, which shows the change between our proposed rates and the base rates. Okay? So what you can see under the proposed column is similar to base and current. The more a user consumes, the more a user has to pay. But what's interesting to note is if you look at the column that shows the change between proposed and current or even proposed and base, you can see that the maximum increase a user can expect under the proposed approach is $16.12 per quarter. And that happens at around 3,000 gallons of consumption. Now, at a more typical quarterly residential consumption of around 8,000 gallons, the increase between proposed and current is about $11. But if we compare proposed to base, which is the minimum we need to do a baseline in order to generate sufficient revenues, the increase is about $3. Okay? So now, I know we presented a lot of data here in this table, so I thought we'd take another way of looking at this information and look at it graphically. And in particular, I'm going to focus on these two columns here, which show the change in cost between base and current as well as proposed versus current. And we'll start with proposed versus current. So it's that column of data there that we're going to take a look at. So this line here is just a graphical representation of the data that's in that column. It shows the change in quarterly water charge at various levels of consumption. And what I really want to highlight here is that there's a peak to this line. What does that mean? Well, that means there's a maximum level of increase the user can expect, the maximum being $16.12. Now, of course, many users, most users, will have an increase much smaller than that, but nevertheless, there is a peak. Now, what does this look like for the base scenario? So we're going to look at the column that's base versus current. So that's what that line looks like. And as you can see, there is no peak to this graph. So there is no upper limit, no cap, on potential increases under the base scenario. And this is what we believe to be one of the biggest advantages of the proposed approach, is that it caps the increase at $16.12 a quarter. Whereas under the proposed or under the base scenario, the potential increase just gets bigger and bigger. Okay? So that's a look at how we tried to minimize the impact to our customer through our rate design. So we'll move on to our next objectives. And I promise not all the objectives will take that long, but that was an important one, I think. So our second objective was to ensure that our new rate design impacts our residential and our commercial customers in a similar way. And to do that, we're going to go back to looking at our frequency distribution diagram. So this is the one we saw earlier that shows change our annual water charge for all of our customers. Now, here's that graph for residential customers only. And then again, for commercial customers only. Now, you'll see there's some differences in the graph. The commercial graph looks much more sparse, but that's because we have much fewer commercial customers than we do residential customers. But what you'll also notice is the general shape of these graphs is very similar. They all kind of look like Hallie's Comet. Now, also important to note is the maximum increase, the maximum on all of these graphs. All of them are capped off at or very close to that 7680. So the maximum increase that our residential customers or our commercial customers can expect is very similar. Now, again, that's the maximum, as you can see under both graphs. Most customers will pay much less than that. So what do these graphs tell us? Well, they tell us that the impact of our new rate design affects residential and commercial customers in a fairly similar manner. Okay? So on to the next objective, which is fairness and equity. We want to make sure our new rate design is fair and treats our customers equally. So I should acknowledge the fact that fairness and equity is complex with multitude of factors to be considered, many of which are probably beyond the scope of a utility rates review. But one fairly objective measure of fairness and equity is that all users should pay for the cost of service they receive. And we know based on our analysis that the cost of getting access to the water system or for that availability of water is $20 per quarter per customer. And that's a fixed cost. Now, under our proposed rate design, that $20 is recovered directly through the fixed user charge per unit. Under our current rate design, that $20 is recovered through a margin on the user fee. And what I mean by margin is what the user pays in total less what the town has to pay for the cost of providing that water. So that's the margin. And that's what's really left over to go towards our fixed costs. So now, let's consider whether our current rate design is fair and equitable. That is to say, do users currently pay for the cost of service that they receive? Again, I'm going to show a fairly large table here, but we'll build it out together. These two columns should look familiar. There are quarterly consumptions at various levels and then what the user currently pays at that level of consumption. This next column shows the cost for the town to purchase the water at those levels of consumption. So that's our variable cost. Next column is the difference between the previous two columns. So the difference between what the users pay and what we pay to buy the water. So that's our margin. That's what's left over to go towards fixed costs. Next, we have our actual fixed costs, which we determine to be $20 per customer, and it's fixed relative to consumption. So that's why it's $20 all the way down regardless of consumption level. And what we can see here, there are differences. So there's a range of consumption where the user is not paying enough to cover all of the fixed costs. But there are also ranges of consumption, so just below that red square, where users are paying more than enough to cover the fixed costs. So in essence, there's a subsidy here between users. So under our current rate design, some users are paying more than the cost of the service they receive, while other users are paying less than the cost of service they receive. So let's consider this for our proposed rate design. So this is exactly the same table, except the second column is now replaced with what the user would pay under our proposed rate design. And what you'll notice here is there's exactly enough margin left over to cover the fixed costs. There's no over or under. So in essence, no user is subsidizing or being subsidized by any other user. Okay? And this is because our proposed rate has been specifically designed to recover the full cost, both the variable and the fixed cost of running our water utility fully and directly from the users. So our proposed rate design ensures that every user, at every level of consumption, pays for the cost of service they receive. And that's why we believe the proposed rate design is more fair and equitable than the current one. Finally, we'll look at our last objective, which is really about simplicity. So is this rate design easy to understand, easy to explain, easy to administer? Well, hopefully, if we've explained it well enough, that you all understand what we're trying to do and why. The proposed rate structure is fairly simple, consists of these three components that we've looked at earlier. And it can be implemented with existing data that we already have and as well as billing software that we already have. Okay? So that is a look at what our proposed change is as well as how it impacts our customers, evaluating it against the objectives that we talked about. I think now I will pass it back to Andrew to have a quick recap.
Thank you, Kathy. We're almost there. Just a very quick recap. So what will the proposed rates achieve? It's going to give us sufficient revenue to ensure financial sustainability. It'll give us stable revenue to match our cost structure. It'll minimize the impact of the increase. In other words, it's better than simply raising the variable rate, and we've shown you that. And it ensures that users pay for the cost of services they receive. Sufficient revenues. We've shown you what will happen under our proposed structure and rates. We'll take that red line and turn it into a green and bring it back within policy thresholds. Revenues will become more stable. We're closing that gap between our revenue split and our cost split so that it's better aligned now and we can pretty much assure that we're going to collect enough money to run the utility. to run the utility regardless of consumption. And if there is greater than expected consumption, it's not going to give us a windfall, and if it's lower than expected, we're not going to have a deficit. We're minimizing the magnitude of that increase through our preferred methodology, whereas it's much lower than it would have been if we had simply just raised the variable rate by a dollar. That distribution shows what we intend to do. We believe it's fair and equitable. It ensures that users pay for the cost of services on the two basic benefits derived from the system. One is for the availability of water, and that's essentially our fixed cost, and the other is for the use of that water, the variable cost. So even if you're not using it, there is value to you as a customer of just having it there at your door, having treated, safe drinking water, and available for all uses at your whim. We try to eliminate the subsidies that we believe currently exist between customers. And that's shown in the red column there. We've moved it to a system where everyone is paying a fixed cost, which is what is required to operate the system. And then, we've maintained the idea that the more you use, the more you pay. So that conservation element is still in there. This table is reproduced from the staff report, and it's our projection for the next five years. The key points here are that the accumulated surplus balance is right at or just below the minimum threshold level at the end of 2020. So, we're at the point where we have no choice but to increase revenues. The choice then is, how do we implement that increase? And we've taken you through the steps we've taken to determine what the best method is. So you can see that in the five-year plan, that by year five, we're well in the upper range of that threshold, or closer to 15% of revenues. And we do have a couple of lever points in our system, so that if some of our assumptions aren't quite accurate as we go, for instance, our assumed rate of growth in the number of units isn't quite what we expected, we do have some leeway to tweak a little bit. So we don't have to necessarily get closer to the 15% of surplus. We could just be satisfied with being above 10 and getting up to the 15 level over a longer period of time. We also intend to, by year five, increase the amount we're putting into our infrastructure replacement reserve, and that in the long term is meant to match our infrastructure levy, the parcel tax component. But it doesn't necessarily have to happen by year five. It could take a little longer to get there. And then we can use more of that extra revenue to pay for more of the fixed cost of the system. So why does rate design matter? We have to put an end to the ongoing deficits to ensure that our water utility remains sustainable. And we have, making it sustainable is the responsible thing to do in the long term. So we've put off increases over a number of years, knowing that we have this review, and we didn't want to jump the gun per se, but it's going to catch up to you eventually. If you postpone the necessary increases, there will come a time when there's no choice in the matter. And we think by taking the time to do this analysis, we've come up with a methodology that is a better way to do it. We believe that simply raising the rates wouldn't have done it, as it wouldn't get, wouldn't address all of our issues, as we've pointed out. We think what we're proposing will get us there. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hissick, Ms. Chen, and Mr. Restall, for your presentation. And I will open it up to committee members for any questions you might have. Counselor O'Keefe.
Um, well, thank you for excellent presentation. I think I got most of that, and the rationale sounds sound, and your approach sounds good. What, the questions I have are about multifamily buildings. And so, what I understand is, we're going away from having accounts, because accounts could have multiple units on that, and going to a unit thing. So does that mean that owners in condo buildings that will be setting up separate accounts for them now? Or, will, and I'm also thinking about last year when we instituted this practice of having one meter per building. So, I'm just wondering how that's going to work with going from accounts to units? Will you just count those units separately, or will those people have to set up accounts?
Good question, Counselor. What our intention was is to treat a 56-unit strata building the same way as we treat a 56-unit apartment building that has one account. So under the account structure for, let's say, an apartment, they will not have to set up individual accounts. It'll still be as it currently is. So nobody under this scenario will have to set up accounts that didn't have them before. It's just, whereas it was treated as one account with one minimum charge, it'll now be treated as X number of units according to our scaling. And in that manner, both that apartment building and the strata building, which is of equivalent size, will be treated equally. And under both scenarios, there is a consumption charge that applies.
Okay. And so then, it will then be up to the strata to decide how they want to allocate those charges amongst their individual owners?
As it currently stands, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Counselor Rintul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the finance group for the presentation, certainly very comprehensive, and for the staff report. Just out of curiosity, this model that's being proposed, is it in use anywhere else that you're aware of in the CRD, elsewhere? Or are you finding it to be a fairly unique proposal?
I'd like to defer that to Mr. Restall if I could.
Okay, I think I'm back on. I don't think that what we've created, there's an exact model anywhere else, exactly like what we've created. A lot of the major components are in use, but, you know, things like the scaling table, which we reviewed, it's kind of made in Sydney specifically. So, there's elements of it that are in use, for sure, and I'd say the majority of the pieces are used somewhere, but there are certain made-in-Sydney aspects of this approach, for sure.
Thanks very much for that, appreciate it.
I think Ms. Chen has something to offer.
Yes, thank you very much. Just to add to that, so we sort of divided and conquered in terms of doing the research. So I am aware that Oak Bay uses a very similar unit-based approach, and I've spoken to some other finance staff in terms of administering it. So it has, it is used within the CRD, as well in our research, reviewing the AWWA rate-setting manual, the rate, the unit-based approach is also commonly mentioned in that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and follow-up. Do you know how long Oak Bay have been using this sort of similar format?
I don't know the exact number of years, but I believe the person who I spoke to who worked there has worked there for over 10 years at least, and it's been in existence for as long as she's been working there.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing that, I have a couple, if I might. Referring to page five of the report we got, I noticed on your slides, or you showed an average increase of $26.79 or something to that effect. But in here, it refers to paying no more than $58 on average. Can you tell me what the difference is there?
I believe the report is incorrect when it referred to a $58 average. It's $58 maximum is what I meant.
Okay. One other question.
I'm sorry. Maybe Ms. Chen can provide more elaboration on that.
I'm not quite sure exactly where that $58 comes up in the report, but Mr. Hissick is correct. The $58 is the threshold at which it's sort of the upper limit for 90% of our customers. So 90% of our customers would pay no more than $50 at maximum. The $26.79 is the average.
Thank you. Mr. Hissick, this is definitely a question you would be able to answer. So hypothetically speaking, if we were to not implement this, say for a year, would we be able to offset the money that was needed through the provincial granting that was offered to us?
Well, as per the provincial guidelines for the use of that safe restart funding, it's not meant to be used to subsidize operations, but I suppose it could be done in such a manner as we forego revenues, but I'd have a hard time saying that we forewent those revenues because of COVID. And I think it's a tenuous fit to do that.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? I believe there's a recommendation.
I'll move that the proposed water rate structure and accompanying rates be approved.
Second discussion? Guess it's just going to be me. This sort of pertains to the question I asked, and I kind of, I totally agree with what you've provided here. The information's excellent. I realize it's something we need to do, and you guys have done some excellent work here to give us an option, I think, which is a good, probably the best of all worlds. So I think it'll work really well. The reticence I have, and it circles back to COVID again, and I'm, I'm just concerned for people on fixed incomes in our community, and it's not, it's not a large amount of money, but for some people it is. People who have lost their jobs. I just, I just can't help but see the added costs that are coming forward to people, and I feel like we're piling on a little bit. Pension, CPP premiums have gone up. They're estimating about $85 a month more for a family for groceries a month. Price of gas went up. All of these things have increased, and I'm just worried about the most vulnerable in our community and how this is going to impact them. And, I mean, $58 if it is a max, to most people in our community probably isn't that big of a deal, but for some people, it is a big deal. And so I just worry about that, and that's why I asked the question I asked. Just something I want to throw out there, just because I, I just try to, you know, think in terms of the box of how is this going to impact people that are, that are in desperate situations where, you know, they may have lost their job or other things to no fault of their own, and every little penny counts at this particular point in time in their life. So, just something I want to throw out there for my fellow colleagues. Thank you. Okay, I'll, it's been there, I'll put the question to it. All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And seeing there's nothing else on the agenda, let's move to adjournment now for motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Unopposed? None opposed, motion carries. Thank you.